All right. It is 6:30. So we'd like to go ahead and we've got the chancellor coming in here. We'll call to order returning out a closed session.
No report.
We have no actions taken in closed session. So next we have the invocation led by trustee Lang and the pledge of allegiance led by trustee Milchek.
We ask for guidance for today's meeting that we will collectively make the best possible decisions on behalf of the students of the South Orange County Community College and our two colleges, Saddleback Community College near by Valley College. We express our appreciation to all the individuals, administrators, faculty, classified staff, and especially all the folks that serve as leaders of these groups and give up themselves for the benefit of students and the colleagues that they represent. We also thankfully acknowledge the members of the police, fire, and other servicemen and women that keep us and our properties and communities safe. Finally, we thank all the members of our military forces who serve so selflessly at great peril on behalf.
And please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our great nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any slips for public comments, so we're good to go there. So we'll move on to board reports. It's been requested that I start down at trustee Lang.
And I have no report to see.
So then we're on to trustee Jay.
Okay. I have two items I'd like to bring to the board's attention. First, let me offer my congratulation to Saddleback College athletic teams on their fine academic achievements. Having the large majority of the team's grade point averages of 3.0 or greater is a tribute to the student athletes, their coaches, and the college community as a whole. The emphasis on academics as well as athletics is a credit to those students, and they deserve our thanks. The college record was 3.75 for the GPA for the women's tennis team. It is a monumental achievement not found in many institutions. Other teams with grade point averages 3.0 or better include men's golf, women's track and field, men's swimming and diving, women's beach volleyball, baseball, softball, women's swimming and diving, and men's track and field. Well done. The second thing I wanted to talk about is the former trustee, John Williams, was recently inducted to the California Police Olympics Hall of Fame. John has participated in the police Olympics for the past 42 years and has won over 150 medals in track and field and the pentathlon and the decathlon. John was a leading member of the Gaucho Track and Field Team during his college years, setting records for the 120-yard-high hurdles and the 440-yard intermediate hurdles. He lettered in track and field at the University of Iowa. He returned to South Orange County and served on the South Orange County Community College Board of Trustees for 18 years. He, for over 30 years, has continued to support the community by his volunteer coaching of young high school and college athletes at Saddleback College. Congratulations, John.
Okay. I guess I'll go ahead and go. I missed the last couple of meetings, so I haven't really had a chance to formally welcome Martha Uriarte. You know, thank you for being here and giving your time. Sometimes tough as a student to do that, but we appreciate that. And then I did have one thing I attended back in, I think it was June, about, it was the AA or ACC OC Environment and Energy Commission, and there I heard about an assembly bill, which I brought to the attention of the district office that could impact, if it passes, it could impact the district on its ability to lease property or sell off or lease property that we own. And I want to thank the office for taking, getting on that very quickly because it looks like we're able to support the opposition to that, and it's going to be good for us. But it was, it was an informative meeting that I was able to attend. Other than that, I'm thankful to be back, and as I've mentioned to some of the board members, I survived a very adventurous trip.
Well, welcome back. Glad to have you. So just really a commentary for me tonight, this is a quick turnaround for a board meeting. We're going to consider later an MOU between our district and California Community, the California Online Community College District, and we're going to have that discussion later. And that's going to focus on collective bargaining with the online community college, which is dubbed or known as Calbright. But when, and I'm supportive of the idea of an online community college beyond what we might do here tonight. And one of the reasons is that we will hopefully have the ability to offer more students who might not otherwise come to your community college, come here. And in addition to that, have an alternative, more of an alternative to attend community college versus, for example, for-profit colleges and universities. And while I remain concerned about for-profit colleges and universities, I've said this at meetings in years past, I think they're suitable, certainly suitable for some students, and they offer a pathway that is useful both career-wise and for their academic future. But I am concerned about debt that students are still saddled with, deceptive marketing, that's a, that's a big concern in this 90-10 rule. And if everyone understands 90-10 rule, that they're allowed to have essentially 90% of their income from us, the taxpayers, from the federal trough, while at the same time, some of them are profiteering off taxpayers, and that's a big concern for me. So to the extent that the online community college, beyond what we might do here, which is separate discussion later on tonight, is to offer more students the ability to attend our colleges, community colleges, colleges at an affordable rate, I think that's potentially very exciting. Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Wright.
I have a short report today. I look forward to attending an ATEP site tour tomorrow, on Tuesday, July the 16th, at 3:30 PM. I will also attend the South Orange County Community College or District Board Study Session at ATEP at the IDEA Building at 5:00. I want to applaud both chancellor Kathleen Burke, President Glenn Rockmore from Irvine Valley College, and President Elliot Stern from Saddleback College for their written board reports. They're very well done, and I think that's a good, just want to applaud you for that. Finally, I also look forward to the Fall 2019 Professional Development Week that will be held from August the 12th through August the 16th. Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Milchek.
Yeah, thank you. This month, I've met with chancellor Kathleen Burke twice, Letitia Clark, and vice chancellor Anne Marie Gable, and we got a tremendous amount accomplished. So it might be summer, but administrators are working, professors are teaching summer school, and students are learning, and classified staff is holding it all together. And I too am looking forward to Professional Development Week, which, as trustee Wright said, begins on Monday, August 12th, with chancellor Burke's opening session, which I'm looking forward to greatly. And the next day, presentations by both college presidents, President Elliot Stern and President Glenn Rockmore. And then classes begin the following Monday. Everyone here knows that, but I'm just letting our viewing audience know that our academic excellence and striving for academic excellence is something that we do all year long at South Orange County Community College District, Saddleback College, Irvine Valley College, and ATEP. Thanks.
Trustee Witt.
Good afternoon, everyone. I don't have much to report, but I just wanted to dovetail what trustee Jay said. I really like to applaud the athletic department, the students. Tremendous work because it's a lot of work and time putting, putting, putting their efforts into making us look good. Once again, I want to say thank you to the presidents for an excellent report, board report, and I look forward to next month to professional development. Looks like they have some very interesting items on the agenda, and I wish you a good rest of the summer.
Okay. Student trustee Uriarte.
Good afternoon. My report is on June 25th, at 10:00 in the morning, our summer meeting between the ASG representatives from Irvine Valley College and Saddleback College took place. Mr. Chris Hargreaves and Jake Ribcik represented, representing Saddleback College, and a conference call with Mrs. Anissa Har Johnson and president of ASG from IBC, Fares Kative. We were, we were able to just have this conference call meeting and agree about the future of the fall meetings. And also, we just came out with another important goal is just to improve the communication of goals and decisions of the ASG students with, with other students from both colleges. All this because many students at respective colleges, they don't know the efforts or the time committed by the elected members from ASG. Also, to honor our responsibilities and show accountability and transparency to the students that elect us into these positions. We would like to encourage for the following fall semester, student involvement and also create initiative in benefit of the student population and to help them to successfully finish their certificates, associate degrees, and associate degrees for transfers. What else? Our next meeting is scheduled for tomorrow. Also, I would like to immensely thank the support that I have been receiving here by Kathleen Burke, Letitia Clark, and Grace Garcia for constantly updating me, sharing the calendar, and answering all my questions regardless of this student trustee position. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chancellor Burke.
And I have no report tonight.
But you wrote one.
Yes, it's all there.
All right. College presidents' report. I guess we'll start with Dr. Stern since.
Happy to do that. I want to highlight something and thank trustee Wright for the acknowledgement of the work we are putting into our monthly reports. I want to highlight a finding that I reported to you and talk a little bit about that because we're especially proud of it, and I think it's very important. There's always a question about, especially vis a vis our budget situation, as you now know, about what the return on investment is in student supports, and I think that's a question we need to ask ourselves each time we allocate resources toward a given support. What is the value of that resource? Two of you have spoken tonight about the value of athletics. Athletics is an expensive program, but the return on investment, we know, is very high because of the attainment that athletes reach as a result of that investment. Scholarships are also an expensive investment, and we ask a lot of people to donate a lot of scholarships, as we will be doing at our gala, and we hope you will join us for that in September. But scholarships do have a bit of a selection bias because people do have to apply for them, but nevertheless and despite that, what we've seen in this study is that scholarships will work in a very big way. And this study, unlike one I did at my previous college, showed that delta to be far more significant than I've ever seen before. Specifically, a partial scholarship doubled a chance as student of credential attainment. A full scholarship nearly tripled attainment levels to around 75% for students. So I think it speaks to non-academic barriers, which has been a focus of discussion at these meetings for the last several months, and with good reason, because scholarships try to ally some of those issues that students have with non-academic barriers. So in the months to come, as I have pledged to you from the first time I met with you, you will see more data in our reports, and in particular, that data will hopefully speak to returns on investment of various allocation of resources, but particularly student support, where we think it's important to show the value of what we do at each level and with everything we do. But the good news tonight is that scholarships work.
Okay. And sitting in for Dr. Rockmore, we have David Kachatrian.
Yes, good evening. Thank you, David Kachatrian, Vice President of College Administrative Services. President Rockmore is attending the President's Academy Summer Institute organized by AA-CC this weekend, sends his regret for not being here. And I just wanted to use this opportunity to highlight a couple of areas that my team and the college as a whole is focusing on as we gear up for the new semester. First is the facilities and technology master planning process. That's, we're going through the RFP process, and it's very laborious, and it's time well-spent as we really set the course for the next several years in these important areas in facilities and technology. We're working with both Saddleback College and District Services who's leading the charge and to develop these plans. It's very important. The second area I wanted to focus on is, or highlight, is the safety and security enhancement measures. That is a top priority for the college, and I know the district as a whole. The security camera and access control project is well underway, and I think the cameras are about 80% done and have already proven to be effective in police investigations, you might have heard. And that's a very good investment. Thank you for support in that project. In addition, we'll be focusing on emergency preparedness and business continuity, especially, you know, in light of the recent earthquakes. We'll be holding several open forums in the next couple of weeks and actually in the, during flex week as well, on earthquake education and preparedness. And actually, our own president, Rockmore, will be sharing some of his seismological research done many years ago that is still true today and pertaining to this region. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does not appear we have anyone for ASG reports, and we do not have any board requests for reports, so it looks like we're going to move on to discussion items. And we have 4.1, District IT Student Design Team.
Good evening. For years in District Information Technology, we have striven to incorporate more student voices throughout our operations. Tonight, to share the work of our student design team is their leader, Jim Gaston.
Thanks, Bob. And I hate to start the presentation on a negative note, but I need to let you know I was kind of deeply wounded earlier when so many of my colleagues expressed surprise that I'm wearing a tie tonight, as if that was an unusual occurrence. So I just wanted to be reflected in the official minutes that it is not a clip-on, that I actually did. A geek can learn to do some things, so. Usually when I'm at a board meeting, it's because we're requesting some funding for a new project, and so I'm actually kind of excited to be here instead of doing that to talk about what's really the best part of my job, which is working with, directly with our students. And the story really starts back in May of 2006, when the board approved funding for us to build our own student system. It's a highly unusual, it's not unprecedented, but it's not the typical path that most districts take, but we were successful. We delivered the system actually within the original budget and actually a few months early. And each year, we've, we've worked on making it better and better, and we've added some really innovative systems focused specifically on student success, systems like MAP and Sherpa and Smart Schedule. And we're really proud of those, and those have been successful for a number of reasons. One of them is, is quite frankly, at the risk of sending like a, like a suck-up to the board, it's because you've invested in these systems. You've allocated the funds for us, and that's not something that we take for granted. It's something we greatly appreciate. Another reason is we have a ridiculously talented team in District IT. I remember hearing once that as a manager, you're knowing, you know you're doing your job well if during a staff meeting you look around and you realize that you're the dumbest one in the room. And based on that standard, I am wildly successful with the team that we have. We're really proud of them, and I'm really pleased to be working with them. But we can have great resources, we can have the best technical talent, but we would still be failures if the systems that we developed weren't focused on students. And that's what our student design team does for us. They keep us focused and they keep us grounded. Our student design team is the secret sauce really to what we do in District IT. We've had one for over a decade, and they've become so ingrained into our culture and our DNA that we kind of take it for granted and we forget that it's unusual. And that's been, we've learned, Bob and I do presentations at conferences, higher ed technology conferences, a lot. Over the last couple of years, we've seen a shift in the questions, not so much about the end product, but how we built it. So we've, we've actually started to shift the emphasis of our presentation. We just got word we've been accepted to present at the Educause Conference in the fall, and really the focus of our, of our entire presentation is our student design team and how we incorporate them. And then we're just going to show Smart Schedule at the end as this is what, this is what happens when you really focus in on the students. And we're hearing from other colleges, our students were featured in a recent edition of Campus Technology Magazine. Other colleges are approaching us now, asking us about our process. A team from Citrus College is coming on campus next week to meet with us and with our students. And so we're really pleased about that and the potential for us having a larger impact than just our district. So I could go on and blather on for quite a bit about our student design team, but instead, what I want to do is show you a video that we're very appreciative of. Letitia Clark produced this and just really did a fantastic job. I think it really highlights the work of our team in a really nice way. So I'm going to do that, and then afterwards, we've got a couple of the students from our design team, not all of them were able to make it tonight, but a couple of them are here. They're going to briefly highlight what they like best about the team, and then we can take any questions that any of you have. So let's just go to the video.
I would say that some of the best parts of being part of the student design team is working with an amazing team, amazing employer, amazing friends, and bringing all the thoughts together, agreeing on things.
The best parts for me on the design team is definitely being able to know that I do have a voice and an opinion that can be heard and can be shared. We all are just the voice for the students.
I really, really enjoy working here, and the things that we're doing, we have our hands in things that are going to help people for a long time, so it's an incredible experience. I love it here.
Our student design team, the main purpose is to be the voice of the student within District IT. It's obviously really usual for staff at the colleges to interact with students on a regular basis, but at the district offices, we really don't do that that much.
I think they've been incorporated into every aspect of our operations and improved those aspects, everything from the initial brainstorming of the projects to the usability studies.
Yeah, our students are involved in the entire process. There's three main stages that we have with a software development project. The first is design, so they're in the room while we're doing the design work. Then in the development stage of it, they're giving us immediate feedback as the developers are working, sometimes directly to the developers. And then when it's time to deploy, then they're the ones that are actually helping build the tutorial videos that explain to the students how to use these systems that they helped design.
So being on the student design team, it gives me an opportunity to work with my fellow students in helping design our web services, giving feedback to the faculty, and giving students a voice for how our student systems work. I also take on a lead role of editing all of our help content and writing the scripts for it, as well as making sure we finish all the videos on time for all of our services that help our students use our services better.
I would say my experience of being part of the focus group is taking the experience and bringing it forth to other students and seeing their opinions and reactions in real time and seeing how our ideas and how our actions and opinions have been reflected and how other students think about that. I would say that this experience would be very useful for me because working with a team and going to meetings, I think it has brought up my confidence a lot and helped me to voice my opinion freely.
I would say this is a great resume piece because not only are you improving a system, but you're also helping others. So for me, it's one of the things where I was like, okay, well, what have you done? Well, let me show you. This is what it looked like before, this is what we've improved, and based off of that, we can show the progress when it comes to the things we've done.
I've recommended it to some of my other coworkers. I'm like, this is such a good job. It's so laid back, fun, relaxed, and it's really cool to see all the hard work that they put in to each project that they make for students.
If you're considering implementing a design team, I would say without a doubt, 100%, go with it.
Do it as soon as possible, get the widest variety of students that you can get from different age ranges, backgrounds, goals, socioeconomic class, to give you the best variety and the best understanding of how diverse your student population is and how to help each type of student reach their goal.
So again, I really want to thank Letitia for her work on that. This is a video we'll be using for many years to come. It's currently, there's a link to it out on my site because we're recruiting for some open positions on our student design team. Bob and I will also be using this at conference presentations, so you did a terrific job. So we really appreciate that, so. So tonight, we have the real stars of the video standing behind me. We have Sam Seifalahi. He has been with us for several years. We're very proud of him, but we're a little sad he's going to be leaving us. He just learned a couple of weeks ago he's been accepted into USC, so he's going to be transferring out in the fall, so we're really pleased with him. And then also, Bita Gebius here, and they're going to give you a quick highlight, and then we'll take any questions, and Bita's going to go first.
Thank you, Jim. Hello, good evening. I would like to start off with saying that I reviewed the video earlier today, and I kind of thought that I have three main points to go over so that the entire thing doesn't sound as repetitive, so without further ado, I'll begin. Firstly, being part of the student design team, we are really here to be the voice of the students, as was mentioned in the video. Now, to elaborate on this, we are representing the student populations at both colleges, Irvine Valley College and Saddleback, in the IT department, and really at the center of all of our decisions and opinions lies the question, how would I, as a student, view this? Beneficial, there's room for improvement, et cetera? By doing so, we know and see that our opinions and our voices do have a positive impact on students' lives, our lives, and that this impact is actually going to last for a long time for the students as well. Lastly, as for the job, we can say that it's both a give and take. By going to the meetings and putting our time into it, we are hopefully helping the projects of the IT department. In return, we are awarded by the unique work experience that we get out of it, the amazing people that we get to work with, and also the personal improvements that we take away with us, like heightened confidence, as mentioned. Lastly, I'd like to thank everyone on the team and thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sam. As Jim introduced me, I just want to go over a couple of points of emphasis that I think the team really gives to the students along with the job as well. As we've gone over a million times, representing the student body is really important because we get direct feedback straight into the IT department and giving everyone a chance to really fully understand how the web service is working. to really fully understand how the web services work and how the student voice can change it for the better, because these are designed for students. A big thing is making tangible positive change inside of these web services. So we can see the feedback that we're giving is actually changing the web services to work for students directly, which is very valuable for us and I think for all the students. Something else I'd like to point out is the great work experience. So you get to work directly with tech experts and professionals in the field and it's really good for students to get that opportunity to dive in with these tech experts and learn about technology, because technology is becoming a bigger part of our economy as well. Specifically for my part that I've been in the student design team, I think is a good opportunity for people with creative backgrounds and people who are going to be studying the arts with video editing, voiceover, acting. I think that's a good addition to the team as well. That's all the emphases I have. Thank you guys so much for listening. Welcome to take any questions.
Okay. I have a request to speak from Trustee Wright.
What projects did you enjoy the most that you worked on?
Personally, I like SMART Schedule. That's, I think, one of the most important and mostly important, because it requires us to look through our classes and our direct feedback of adding the filtration system into our class schedule helps every student find the classes that they need. And it's helped me out personally and I think a lot of other students as well.
Good.
To answer your question, I would say for me was working on the MAP project, because it was something that was so new and we weren't exactly sure how it was going to work out. But in the end, it turned out to be such a useful tool, even if the feedback immediately wasn't all there. But however, we think that we need to give it more time and by implementing it, we are going to help students in the near future and right now.
Can you explain just a little bit about what you were doing with math?
A map.
What were you doing?
Map.
Map, okay, map.
Yes. It's a project that basically allows students to log in and according to their MAP plan, which they select with their counselors, they select the classes for each semester and really any future semesters that they want. This helps them to kind of filter and go through the classes according to their MAP plan.
Okay. That's here my academic plan.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Trustee Jamal.
So two questions, one for the Bita and Sam and then one for Jim and Bob. For the students, first of all, great. It was wonderful to see the video. I watched it over the weekend and it was really well done. Good job, Letitia. So my question for you, the students, is has it changed your, or influenced you in any way in your career aspirations participating in this collaboration?
Yeah, absolutely. I used to be a film major for about two years. I applied to a bunch of schools, realized it wasn't for me. I changed my major to business administration and I think the experience from this job and working in that professional environment has primed me for the type of work I want to go into, my next passion sort of. And I think that type of environment has, is ultimately going to help me in the long run. And I think that kind of work in technology has also sparked my interest in what I want to do in the future.
My thoughts on this would be kind of similar, except for the first part, I wasn't ever a film major. But I did change my major though, I was a bio major. But then I changed to business, which was like a 360-degree change. It was difficult, but business is my passion and I know it right now, which is, you know, good that I found it. But I think this job helped me because it allows me to, like I said, voice my opinion freely and go to these meetings and it helps me work with the team. And this will help me because in the future, I'd like to earn my MBA, hopefully in marketing, what's the other one? Management. So I think developing my public speaking skills in that sense and, like I said, working with the team will help me get experience and improve on that.
Thank you. Great. And then I just wondered, Jim, Bob, how were the students selected to participate?
What we do is we put a simple form out on my site. In fact, it's out there right now, along with a link to the video. And we just ask some basic questions about their background, are they a new student, when are they going to transfer, what their goals are. And then we, as Sam mentioned in the video, as much as we can, we try to look for a really good mix of students. We always want somebody who's brand new, coming right out of high school. We usually have an older adult. We very often look to veterans programs at the colleges and try to get a vet on the team. So we try to get a good cross-section that are really going to represent the students.
And not only are the students themselves diverse, but the methods that we use, we have the students always keep in mind a series of design personas that represent different students in their situations.
Great, thanks. Trustee Milchiker.
I thought it was great also. And Chancellor Burke forwarded the link to our board, so I watched it last night too and it was a great, great movie, Letitia. And I was able to sign up for the district YouTube channel after I watched it, so that was really helpful. I just think that it's really great having students involved in creating these wonderful portals and great registration and student success online experiences for everyone. I was about to suggest you have like an older adult, like maybe an emeritus student, someone coming back to school. And I was going to suggest me, but that would be a huge conflict of interest because it looks like it would be a lot of fun to be on the student design team. But I'm sure you could get a student that would, you know, have different requirements actually, as to how they get into the portal, how they use this team. And I just wanted to say that our district has always been way ahead of the curve on IT from the very, very beginning. We've been better than most other post-secondary schools and that means four-year institutions. And I always thought it was because of me, because I'm kind of a geek at heart and I love this stuff. But I don't do any of the work, I just encourage them a lot, so that's helpful. But I think that it was really excellent that you're working with the students. I wish you could do something with, and I know you can't, but the fact that when students sign up for community college for the first time, that's a statewide system. The students don't know it, but they're actually signing up over the statewide system and that's cumbersome. And that might turn some students of all ages away. So I'm going to ask you, is there anything that you can do about that? I know it's not our district, I know it's out of Sacramento, but I thought you might have some suggestions, because you're so smart. Thank you.
Yeah, no, there's nothing we can do. Other than offer our suggestions for it. I mean, we could just separate from the statewide system and have our own application. We had an online application before the state created one. But there's some real advantages to the students, because most students go to multiple colleges, they can fill out the application once, and then they can send it to multiple colleges. So I think it's a good idea to be part of the state system. The state has heard that criticism from a lot of colleges and they are trying to make some improvements. So we're hoping that'll get better.
Trustee Milchiker, there was legislation about that last year.
There was, excellent.
Yes.
Because, you know, you're trying to, you're trying to encourage students of all ages to go to the community colleges and they get to this really cumbersome application process. And I'm sure it might discourage some students from completing the registration process. So I'm glad there is legislation about it. Excellent. Okay, thank you.
All right. So this was referenced a little bit in the video and a little bit with the answers. I'm just curious, how do you market? It doesn't sound like you have to have a whole lot of technological experience. You don't have to be a programmer or no code or any of that. So how do you get past that? How do you make that leap to recruiting someone who might be like, well, I don't have any coding, I don't know any, you know? That they might think that that's an aspect that they have to have.
Yeah, and we, if you go out there now, if you log into my site, there's a link off to our simple application. And it's, we explicitly state, we're not looking for people who have technical skills. In fact, in my mind, that's actually an impediment, because geeks think differently than normal people, right? And so we use systems differently. So we want the regular folks represented in that. And the other thing to address, another issue that Trustee Milchiker brought up, when, once our students helped us design a system, they become really lousy testers, because they know where to click, they know what it's. So the student feedback doesn't end with our student design team, it actually begins there. And you saw it in the video, we'll go set up a booth out in the quad and we'll have a stack of pizzas. And as students walk by, we'll say, you want a free slice of pizza? Sit down at this laptop and use this system and give us your feedback. And our student design team helps facilitate that. Sometimes we have, we'll visit student government, sometimes we'll have more focused labs where people come in and sit down with, if it's a more complicated thing like MAP, it can't just be a five-minute walk-by. So again, and that's where we get the broader cross-section of input as well.
Sounds good.
Yeah, and another thing I want to mention, that when you go online and sign up for classes, the thing that you've added most recently is there's a list of how many students are on the waiting list and there's also a list of how many open seats there are in the classroom. And that's really helpful when you're trying to choose a class. And I think that's a really good thing, so thank you.
Seeing no more requests to speak, you're off the hook. Let me take the tie off now. Oh, well, oh, I'm sorry. Does that one not pop up on mine? Okay. Student trustee? Sorry.
That's good. Thank you very much for the time and effort that everyone have committed to have our very own registration platform, my site. As a student, I like the graphic interface and the fact that the site is very user-friendly. Question, are you guys planning to add like a feature to rate my professor? You know, as a student, it is very important and since we have a variety of professors with different teaching styles, I believe it is very important when we choose our classes. Thank you.
We've talked about it a million times in our meetings. Unfortunately, we won't be able to associate those two things together, because it is a third party. We'd probably get our heads chopped off, I think, is how we word it. But it is an important tool and getting that feedback is important. The number one thing, though, is taking everything with a grain of salt, realizing that a lot of people who do leave feedback on Rate My Professor, they might be angry, they might be really happy, so we have to take everything into consideration. It is a very useful tool. I don't think we can put them together, though. That's the only problem.
I don't think we have to ask how the Faculty Association would feel about that. Okay. All right. Now you're off the hook, I think.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. So next, we have Saddleback College Plan for the Advanced Technology and Education Part.
A couple of introductory points. First, Trustee Milchiker, Bob just asked me last week if we could find an emeritus representative for the student design team. So we're in the process of finding somebody. And second, to express a regret, I did not include music in this presentation, but perhaps when we get to the upbeat portion, you can sing a little song in your head to add to the upbeat mood that I hope we have. This is a bit of an awkward moment and a bit of an awkward presentation, because you asked me from the very first time you interviewed me to decide when I was going to execute the ATEP plan for Saddleback College. And after a very careful examination of that plan, I come to you very humbly and say, I think we've developed a better plan, which will make it easier to execute as such. So let's talk a little bit about what we want to do. First, I think the question that was asked, and I found some history to suggest this, this plan dated back to 2013, I think that the question that was asked was very legitimate, which is, which of our successful programs might we want to move to ATEP to support ATEP's work and the board initiative? And that's a perfectly legitimate question, but I want to tweak it a little bit as we think about where we want to go with ATEP, to suggest that really, we should be asking ourselves where the win-wins exist. What does ATEP offer in terms of its location, in terms of potential for industry partners that would allow some programs to actually benefit and to grow? So one thing that I believe really strongly, and I know many of you have spoken about, is the future of higher ed to include workplace learning. So I think work-based learning is part of our future. So I think ATEP provides an opportunity to create industry partnerships that can be part of work-based learning. So what programs might benefit and head in that direction as well? And also, what programs might actually grow by virtue of being at ATEP? So the old plan was to talk about selective programs from health sciences, as well as a training center, a SIM center, to be placed at ATEP. So let's talk about that for just a moment. First of all, in terms of the things I just mentioned to you, there is no real growth potential for most of our health sciences programs. The cap for those programs is limited by, in some cases, accreditors, by the state, and by virtue of clinical placement limitations. So if we, for instance, took nursing and put it up at ATEP, we don't expand our program in any way. We simply cannibalize a program at our college and move it to a satellite site. And in that sense, we're not effectuating any growth for the college and we're not really leveraging the site in any way. As for the SIM center, when this plan was conceived in 2013, I was a health sciences dean and at the time, we built a new facility that had a state-of-the-art, high-fidelity, which is the newer version of SIM, a high-fidelity SIM center. Well, that was very cool at the time. We were one of only two community colleges in our region to have it. But today, almost every community college has a high-fidelity SIM center. And healthcare providers in the region, particularly large healthcare providers in the region of Tustin, UCI, Kaiser, they have their own SIM centers. They're not going to pay to rent ours. So the times have changed a bit since that plan was conceived and there's no longer an advantage to be had for building a new SIM center. More, and I don't think, with all due respect to the folks who put a lot of time in this, they had buy-in from the programs within health sciences to move to Tustin. And we've been very careful in talking to faculty along the way to make sure that the programs we do select and bring to you that want to go to Tustin are the ones that want to do this and for all the right reasons. So here's the new plan. The new plan is we're going to have ATL at Tustin. So ATL is Advanced Transportation and Logistics and Culinary and Hospitality. So of these, advanced transportation is primarily an extension of what we already do and then add a logistics program to it, which I'll talk about in just a minute. Similarly, we already have culinary, a great culinary program. We want to add to it by enlarging, elonging, and fully fleshing out a full-fledged hospitality program. If you think about these things, as I drive up and down I-5 and visit Tustin from time to time and I look around, I see dealerships, I see hospitality. There's a major hospitality company you may have heard of up in Anaheim. There's lots of good potential for us to create workplace partners and business alliances by being at Tustin with these areas. So let's flush these out a little bit. First, ATL. So advanced transportation, we already, we're one of the leaders in Orange County in working on alternative fuel in our auto tech repair program. So we want to expand that. We want to really focus on electric cars, focus on fuel cars, fuel cell cars, focus on natural gas-powered cars. So focusing on alternative fuel, and that means being able to partner not just with the same dealerships that we partner with now, but dealerships who are doing more hybrid cars, more electric cars and fuel cell cars and natural gas cars. We want to expand that scope into autonomous vehicles. This is the future. We all know it. So are our auto tech repair grads prepared for the future? We want to make sure they are. And that means focusing on autonomous vehicle repair and then finally expanding out to include logistics and supply chain management. With culinary and hospitality, we want to build a state-of-the-art facility with an in-house restaurant for training, so students can get a full experience in culinary, but also at the front of the house as well, in the hospitality and managing that restaurant. We also see lots of potential for hospitality partners that exist north of El Toro that we don't have here, but also have a facility that might be available to other colleges in the area for leasing. For instance, if we have a restaurant, we might operate it Monday through Thursday and then allow other colleges to rent it out, to do pop-up restaurants on Friday, so their students get the same training. And of course, hospitality, when we look around our region and think who the major employers are, tourism is number two in Orange County. So how can we not be doing hospitality at Saddleback College? ATL and Education Center, so the Advanced Transportation and Logistics Center. And I ask you now to vision for me for just a few moments and at this time, you can play high-speed rhythmic music in your head to think about where this would go. We're talking about smart vehicles, autonomous vehicles, and alternative fuel vehicles. These are the vehicles of the future and we want to, again, make sure our repair program keeps up with that and advances it, so far beyond what other colleges are doing, but also allowing us to partner with them, to offer some additional training to students at other colleges who might want training in these areas. Logistics, as you probably know, is how we move things that get sold along a supply chain. So this can be along production, it can be out to the retailer, but this is a major thing in retail, is how do we get things to the stores and to the customers? Think about a company like Amazon. People think of Amazon as a retail company. Amazon is not a retail company. Amazon is a logistics company. They figure out how to get things from the retailer to you and to wow you in the speed at which they do that. That's logistics. And we think that a training program, and that fits well with our transportation plan for ATEP. This is an impact map, a heat map, if you will, that shows where industry partners are in Orange County. If you look at this and you identify some cities in this, I should have drawn the El Toro line for you, you'll notice that almost everything is north of us. So again, how do we leverage ATEP? How do we leverage? how do we leverage ATEP? How do we leverage the potential to reach industry partners that are just a little far north of where we are right now, so that we can create those workplace learning experiences for our students, and potentially even include industry sponsorship of some of our programs? We want state-of-the-art facilities. We've toured a very impressive facility. We want a facility where people are learning to work with computers, not just wrenches, and where greasy hands is not an issue, but learning how to code and how to run the computer and do the diagnostics is the focus of the training. So, picture that sort of state-of-the-art facility at ATEP, if you will, for at least half of that ATEP building. Let's talk culinary and hospitality. Again, looking at where those industry partners are, yes, we have a lot of retail and a lot of culinary down in the southern part of South Orange County. But many of the industry partners that we're missing are north of us, are north of El Toro and even north beyond our district boundaries. So, the opportunity to reach those from Tustin would be very important to us. I want to point out at this point, you know, that's not the case in healthcare. We already have all those clinical placements with healthcare providers north of the El Toro. It wouldn't provide anything new for us. We already drive everywhere, and it makes our students drive everywhere for clinical placement. But these are partners north of us that we haven't explored yet in other areas. Again, state-of-the-art facilities, these pictures are from Long Beach, which we had the pleasure of visiting, a huge, wonderful, amazing facility, and we think our students deserve that and not a portable. You know, culinary was one of the few programs in CTE that wasn't included in the ATAS plan. So, they're stuck in a portable right now. So, one of the ways to leverage ATEP is to give them a state-of-the-art facility, too, where we haven't built one yet. So, we think this is a great opportunity. If you look at this second photo, you can see through the windows to the left is the restaurant that adjoins the kitchen at Long Beach. And we're imagining a similar sort of opportunity to create a real restaurant experience for our students adjacent to the kitchen. And lastly, I want to point out that having these programs at ATEP also provides us with some revenue opportunities. And as much as we talk about cutting, and as much as we talk about being austere and looking at return on investment at Saddleback in our new austere era, we also want to look at opportunities for growth and opportunities to raise revenue. Obviously, growing FTES is really important to us at this point, as opposed to just cannibalizing existing students and existing programs. So, here, we have opportunities to grow new programs, particularly in hospitality and logistics and supply chain management, but also increase the number of students in our existing programs by virtue of having state-of-the-art programs that are known in our region for that. We also want to explore the opportunity of more contract education and career development education at ATEP in these areas in particular. And as I mentioned before, we think that having state-of-the-art facilities and alternative fuel and a restaurant might actually allow us to partner with some of the community colleges in our region that also have similar programs, which, by the way, is a good starter in conversation with those, with those community colleges, because we don't want them to be offended or feared, like, feel like we are competing with them in using ATEP for some of these programs. In terms of hospitality services, the restaurant itself, restaurants at colleges that have culinary aren't big revenue raisers. But if it can at least sustain itself and create a training opportunity for students, that's a plus. But the catering side might actually be an opportunity to raise some revenue through this. And then finally, the opportunity to pair with industry means the opportunity to actually look for industry partners and industry sponsors for some of these programs. In many of the new auto tech repair centers that I've visited, parts of them are allocated for different manufacturers who actually sponsor the training and the equipment for that particular vehicle for students. So, the students can very quickly, early in their career path, pick which brand, which manufacturer they want to learn to service, because so many of the diagnostics have become proprietary and very niched. And as a result of that, the equipment and training is actually sponsored by the manufacturer, potentially Tesla, say, for electric cars. So, lots of opportunities there. And that's it. That's our future. That's ATEP. Saddleback at ATEP. Questions?
All right. Give a moment for people to put in a request to speak. I have one from trustee Milchker.
Yeah, actually, you know, when I read it, when I read about it, I was waiting and waiting to see what your proposal was. I said, oh, that's really interesting. And then, as I read it, I got excited about it. I really did. I thought, you know, I was friends with this man named Dan Larius, who was, do you remember Dan? A long time ago. He was like the chair of automotive at Saddleback College many, many years ago. And then, he left to become dean of instruction up in Seattle or someplace. And then, he came back to be president of Irvine Valley College for quite a few years. And then, he left to become chancellor someplace else. So, but he was very successful. And he used to tell me that it was really hard for him to keep teachers in the automotive department, because when they would train students, they would make so much more money than the teachers when they would go out into the, and get jobs in the community. And he said, you know, there's no more grease monkeys. They have to be, really understand computers, because all cars are run by computers now, and they have to understand, they have to be really smart. And so, and the idea of having autonomous vehicles, self-driving vehicles, I'm ready to buy the first one you create yourself. I think, I think this is a really, really, a really open field, and we could help our students get jobs in the community. So, I think that's exciting. I also think having, you know, our culinary department is excellent, and they provided all the food for the, I think it was the scholarship event. And it was like fabulous food. It was wonderful, you know? So, the fact that they could actually have a restaurant and then sell the food to the people in the, in the ATEP community. I know that area in Tustin has become, the Tustin Legacy, there's, it's become like a, there's lots of restaurants there. And, but that brings more people in that want to eat there. I mean, instead of, people might think, well, that, there's enough restaurants. Well, people come into an area where there's lots of restaurants, and they want to eat, and they might look to ATEP and eat there. I would love to have a hotel. I know that might not be in the, in the, in the future. But I think that would be another great way of raising revenue and teaching students to be in that industry. Anyway, so, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that, but I think it's exciting, actually. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Jamal.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Very exciting, the transition here. I have a lot of questions, but in the interest of time, I'll just ask a couple. What kind of conversations, if any, did you have with industry, Caesar, industry-driven programs to select culinary and hospitality and ATL for the ATEP location?
We've not had the conversations with new industry partners yet. Both of those programs have advisory committees with industry partners on them, and the faculty are constantly in contact with industry. And they have informed our decision to include these programs. So, we've looked simply at the existence of those industry partners, trustee Jamal, not had conversations with them to inform the decision. It's really a decision based on the potential for partnerships, not based on early commitments.
And do you think you're, you mentioned the pitfall of the SIM program. When we conceived of it several years ago, it was innovative or one of the first movers, and then we lagged behind. Are we confident that these two choices, that the same fate that befell the SIM program won't happen to these two?
I think that's a very fair question. I think when, what I'm reading about autonomous vehicle technology looks like that's going to carry us through to the next couple of decades. And that's about as far as I can go in terms of horizon for workforce training. Whereas I think SIM, we probably knew at that time that that would be replaced by new technology. So, for instance, we already had Wi-Fi at the time, but SIM was using high-fidelity transmission. We probably could have predicted that SIM would become much cheaper and readily available when it adapted to Wi-Fi. So, we can only make guesses as to whether or not we're planning for something that will eventually be obsolete. But we know as retail turns less to brick and mortar and more to logistics, there is great opportunities there. We know that the one area of brick and mortar retail that's still doing well is restaurants. Millennials love restaurants. So, I think there's a very good future for hospitality and culinary.
I like restaurants, not millennials. Then, the last question is, how are we gonna, do you foresee then, changes in our personnel and faculty to fulfill this, these programs?
Only by growth, only by growth. I think our faculty, so for instance, in automotive, I think Raj and the auto faculty are already state-of-the-art. They're already doing alternative-fuel cars, they're doing electric cars that other schools aren't doing. Other colleges know that we specialize in these areas. So, we're already ahead of the curve. But we need to make sure our faculty have appropriate training and can bring in dealer and new, expand their advisory committees to make sure that that continues. In culinary, I can't begin to tell you the faith I have in our existing facility, in our existing faculty to make this program grow. And they're very excited about that.
Thank you.
Trustee Milchker, you got a question?
Yeah. Are we planning to fund this building with, you know, with our own funds, or are we trying to have some partnerships with these other, perhaps, restaurants or other automotive dealerships in the, in the future? I'm just wondering what your, what your thoughts are about that.
So, ATEP's build-out for Saddleback is already on the construction development list, what we call the kick list. I think once we have your go-ahead on a new plan, we might want to try to move it up in the next cycle of consideration to make this stuff happen a little faster. And so far as industry partnerships go, there isn't a lot of precedent for industry building buildings for colleges. We visited Cerritos, for instance, where industry had donated a couple of million toward the development of their auto facility, but they had cordoned off space for them that was disproportionate in size to their contribution to the budget. So, in my mind, I'm not sure that that's a direction where we want to go. But at any rate, we hope where the sponsorships could help us would be in equipment donations, particularly a lot of the new diagnostic hardware and software. That can be some of the most expensive part of building out a new program, not necessarily in the construction, which I fear is going to be ours to bear.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Seeing no more requests to speak. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, we'll move on to the consent calendar items, 5.0. Do I have any polls? I don't see any requests to speak, so I guess I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar. I have a motion from trustee Lang and a second from trustee Jay to pass the consent calendar. Go ahead and vote on that item. We have a unanimous yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Okay, moving on to 6.1. Saddleback College PE renovation project. Do I have a, I have a motion from trustee Jamal, a second from trustee Jay. Anybody requests to speak? Discuss the item. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Have a unanimous yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 6.2. Irvine Valley College Classroom Technology and Audio-Video Refresh Phase One Project. I have a motion from trustee Witt, second from trustee Lang. Anyone wish to discuss this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 6.3. Memorandum of Understanding for Facilitation of Collective Bargaining Unit Services for the California Online Community College. I have a motion from trustee Milchker, a second from trustee Witt. I imagine a request to speak from trustee Jamal. Hey, look at that.
Well, I already touched on the larger picture of the Online Community College earlier. I wish they had chosen a different name from Calbright, but we didn't, we weren't involved with that process. And I think this has been a serious consideration for the board to move forward with this, and I assume it's going to be approved. And I think there's, there's going to be an online community college. And I do think that there are going to be some benefits to that, if managed properly. And I think our association with it in terms of collective bargaining can potentially be helpful. And there are some other aspects to the MOU in terms of program areas, which potentially could be a benefit to Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College. But, I mean, this is innovative for us. We're, this is being created as we speak, and there's going to be inflection points to evaluate this MOU and determine, is it in the best interests of the district? So, I definitely, at this point, support moving forward.
Yeah, and just to kind of piggyback on that, the idea here that we're approving the intent for us to support the project, I liken the MOU that it talks about how our role is more of an advisory council to them, that we're not actually doing this, that there are sounding board from our expertise. I think I like that. And that we're not committing the Faculty Association or the CSEA to do it. And, you know, that they, they still have a right of refusal, I guess, if they don't want to take part. So, I think it's a win-win from that regard. We had lots of discussion in closed session with, you know, state chancellor and everybody, answering a lot of questions. And those conversations continue to happen, and it evolves. And I'm really happy with the way it's moving forward. Seeing, oh, trustee Lang.
Yeah, I thought, I thought I would just add my two cents' worth as well, and why I'm supportive of the program. And obviously, it's for all the reasons that, you know, trustees Jamal and Prendergast have indicated. But I think the other further consideration here that we all had as trustees was whether this would result in cannibalizing our own programs or other programs that, you know, other community colleges would be offering. And I think we were convinced that it would not, that it would attract a different kind of student from the typical community college student that would be involved in these kinds of IT programs. And so, I think that was another important reason for wanting to support the program.
Very good. So, with that, I guess we'll go ahead and vote on the item. We have a unanimous yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Next, we have 6.4. Dot Resolution: Declaration of Intention to Enter into an Agreement with Irvine Ranch Water District Grant of Easements. I have a motion from trustee Wright and a second from trustee Jay. Any requests to speak on the item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote. We have a unanimous yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. So, with that, we will be having a public hearing on it at the August meeting. Okay. Next, we have 6.5. Grant Award: California Virtual College Online Education Initiative. I have a motion from trustee Jamal, a second from trustee Jay. Do I have any requests to speak or questions? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Have a unanimous yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 6.6. It's a long one. Oh, these are the Boyd Policies. These are for approval. They were reviewed and studied last meeting, except by me. And I believe I have a request for a change on one.
So, I would like to recommend that the board on 3100, which should be the first one, that we make a small change under C: Deficit Financing, and that the first sentence under C read, "Deficit financing is defined as a budget in which projected expenditures exceed projected revenue and ending balances for the year," and beginning balances for the year.
Beginning balance.
Beginning.
Okay. So, I have a motion from trustee Wright and a second from trustee Milchker. So, I'll ask, is that change considered a friendly change to trustee Wright?
Yes.
Is it a friendly change to trustee Milchker?
Yes.
So, then we'll go ahead and vote on the entire 6.6 as a group. Any more requests to speak? Seeing none, go ahead and vote on the item. Have a unanimous yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Okay. Moving on to 6.7. Academic Employee and Classified Administrator Personnel Actions.
No changes.
No changes, and nothing for me to read out. Awesome. I have a motion from trustee Witt and a second from trustee Jay. Seeing no requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. We have a unanimous yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. At this time, I am going to, I realize I messed up a little bit. On 6.4, that we voted to approve, we need everyone's signature. On 6.4 that we voted to approve, we need everyone's signatures, so I'm going to pass this down and have you guys start working on those. So with that, we'll move to 6.8. Faculty Conversion to Canvas One-Time Stipends. A motion from Trustee Jay, second from Trustee Milchker. Seeing no requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Have a six-to-one passage plus a student advisory yes vote. Moving on to 6.9. Classified Personnel Actions.
No changes.
No changes. Have a motion from Trustee Jamal, second from Trustee Wright. Seeing no requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Waiting for, there we go. Unanimous yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 6.10. Non-Bargaining Unit Personnel Action.
No changes.
No changes. Motion from Trustee Witt, second from Trustee Lang. Seeing no requests to speak, we'll vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. 6.11. SOC CD, CD Adjustment to the California School Employer Association Salary Schedule. I have a motion from Trustee Lang, second from Trustee Jay. Seeing no requests to speak, we'll vote on the item. Unanimous, oh, still waiting for one. Unanimous yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. 6.12. Dot Resolution, Classified Employee Position Layoff. Have a motion from Trustee Wright, second from Trustee Lang. This is based on a lack of funding for the program. Seeing no requests to speak, we'll go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous yes vote and a trustee, student trustee yes vote. Okay, that moves us on to reports. Staff Response to Public Comments from Previous Board Meeting. There's none. 7.2. Saddleback College or Irvine Valley College Speakers. Any questions on any of those? 7.3. Facilities Plan Status Report. OPEB Trust Fund. 7.5. District Initial Proposal to Faculty Association. Sunshining Negotiation Topics. All right. Moving on to reports from Administration and Governance Groups, starting with Saddleback College Academic Senate. No one's here. Faculty Association.
Good evening. There's no report tonight from the Faculty Association, other than to report that my colleague, June McLaughlin, Academic Senate President of Irvine Valley College, sends her regret. She is battling a summer cold and looks forward to seeing us all next month. Thank you.
All right. Well, then I guess we don't have Irvine Valley College Academic Senate. Vice Chancellor, Technology and Learning Services.
No report.
Okay. Vice Chancellor, Human Resources.
No report.
Vice Chancellor, Business Services.
No report.
Irvine Valley College Classified Senate.
Just wanted to give a report that on June 3, the Irvine Valley College Classified Senate held their spring summit with a professional development at the Duck Club. We had faculty, business faculty David Bouquet, who provided a Strength Finders Professional Development Seminar for us. On June 12 through the 15, we had eight attend our the 4CS, which is the statewide Classified Senate, Classified Leadership Institute. We had two presentations. One presentation was on the Three CLA Academy that our Classified Senate members participated in about two years ago. And then we also had a presentation on Senate and Union working together. Karen Jimenez, who was a past president of the Classified Senate, has been inaugurated as the 4CS President, statewide Senate President. On July 17 this week, we'll be doing our training for our new Senate, and we're working on our flex week preparations.
Thank you. Guess we'll go ahead and go to Saddleback College Classified.
Good evening. I have no report tonight.
And CSEAs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Later on this month, in two weeks, CSEA delegates will be going to the CSEA Annual Conference, and one of the things that will be a topic of discussion is about federal funding, investment into education in which it's equal for opportunities for all. And naturally, we try to prep for those discussions for conference, as we do many other topics that come to the floor. One of the researches that I did on this topic was a name popped up, and coincidentally, it also, at the same time, I discovered that I'm related to this person, and it's our 19th United States President, Rutherford B. Hayes. And what's interesting about him is that he was our first real education president. He believed that education for all meant a good society. And so he constantly was a proponent of education during his presidency. However, he ended up becoming more of a proponent after his presidency because there were so many things that he ran into roadblocks as, as the US president. But one of the things he did do is he, well, first as governor of Ohio, he co-founded the Ohio State University. I'll forgive him for that. But he actually set up charities so that all students, every student or potential student, had the opportunity to receive scholarships. And by setting up the charities, many students, black, white, and anyone else who came into the country that wanted an education, had the opportunity to get those scholarships. One of those people who did was W.E.B. Du Bois. And so after his presidency, he became the Board of Trustees of the Ohio State University. He set the standard of what presidents, once they leave office, can actually be able to do as far as promoting education. So that was something interesting that I found out in preparing for the CSEA conference.
Thank you very much. So with that, we will adjourn in what could be a new record. Welcome back.
Not quite.
All right.
It was pretty fast, lad.